I want to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for June 21st, 2022 to order. Just a note, we will be going into executive session after this meeting, something that came up today, so not anticipated by the chairman, and it's related to legal strategy. So at the close of this meeting, we will then enter into executive session and not return to open session. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment announcement? Go ahead. Treasure Chest first. You can sit, or you can microphone, whatever's most comfortable.
I do. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ellie Gerson. I'm the chair of the Treasure Chest Committee Acting Chair. We had a, I was sub, I was vice chair, and our chair resigned, so I'm acting chair. And I was going to come this evening to thank you for supporting us as we opened on April 30th, and I was going to make it very simple that we appreciate your support and faith in us that we could do this. And then Larry said, there's a, there's a letter that we had hoped you would see before this evening where I could add some more thanks for people that helped us make this possible on April 30th. Paul and Lynn Fox of Ace Hardware were very generous in donating paint and supplies for us as we spruced up the interior. There was a lot of volunteering, a lot of hands on deck with Heather and a great crew that just, we all joined forces and got it ready. We also want to thank Joni Seeley from Link Hooper's office that helped us make some signs and get those in place, and a special thanks to Link for the work he did in helping us make sure we got what we needed, and especially the booth that's at the entrance now where the gatekeepers wave to the, the people that have their, their stickers. We find that we're fulfilling a role that we promised we would do for the town. The stickers program is, is going to be fully in place by July 1st. So in this time, we've been kind of lenient in letting people come in without their sticker, but with the promise that they would follow through and get it. And I look forward to next year when maybe the old sticker will end one day and the new sticker will start the next, because it's been, you know, kind of a funny interim with going from old to new. I can truly say that 99% of the people are really happy. We get lots of thanks, lots of we're so glad you're open again, but you know, as always, there is that 1% that will look you right in the eye and say, alright, July 1st, I'll get my sticker, you know? And they know what they're doing. We're getting more volunteers and people interested in helping us. I really feel like we have a good team. We have a good team of people that like working together, that know how to latch on to, you know, pick up a task and carry it through, and we're all interested in doing the right thing. So as we move forward, we're going to more consistently have someone at the gate. We haven't been able to always have someone there, but with the inconsistency of the stickers, it's, it's worked out fine. So thank you, it was a leap of faith, but we feel like we did something good.
Excellent, thank you. From what I hear, by all accounts, it's going great.
Thank you.
So, Larry, any comments?
Just what Ellie says, very passionate committee, they work really hard. The Treasure Chest itself is, looks phenomenal, they've repainted, new shelves, it looks organized and regular business, and, and people are very happy that you're there.
They are.
Be included, I have some more stuff to bring over, but.
Excellent. Mary, anything?
Just, I'm curious, when you first opened, were you overwhelmed with donations?
Yes, because everyone said, I've held on to this for two years.
But are you okay now?
We're getting a little bit better, and figuring out, you know, there was always a process of going through items and deciding if.
Because you don't take everything, right?
Oh yeah, that, right from the beginning, that our list is adhered to. And we have a wonderful new volunteer that comes every Sunday and is really good about helping with the furniture, and that's a big thing, deciding, you know, what we should keep. But then also in the process, we go through a lot of the clothing and decide what really isn't going to be taken, and get, passing that on to the Red Cross or the Salvation Army, and that was, has been a, you know, the bins aren't getting emptied as regularly as they should be. So we're figuring out a way to do that. We're handling the books wonderfully, that's really going well. And as ideas come up, we talk about them and, you know, try to find a way to carry it forward.
That's great, thanks Ellie.
You're welcome.
Can I interrupt and kind of prompt you, Ellie, because I got a call a couple of days ago on the number of hours that some of you have spent this past weekend, it's phenomenal.
The number of hours someone?
A couple of volunteers have spent like six or eight hours, and I think you've been that long as well, because of the over, of reacting to Mary.
Right, yes, because during the week, we go in and try to weed through, you know, what, what needs to be. And we were swamped one weekend with a load of shoes that came in from the food pantry and, you know, they were just kind of there when the, when the crew got there Saturday morning, and we had to figure a way to get it, get it out, and miraculously, they all went. So.
Julie?
It's amazing.
No, I think you're right, I think a lot of people, well, most people are so happy that you're back open, and I haven't been yet, but I, I'm sure I'll be there.
Please come.
Great.
And is it on the website, the list of items that you don't want to take?
Do you know, I've never looked, so that's something we should.
We'll check that.
Yeah, just wondering, I mean.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My sense is it is, but I'll double check that.
We have signage too at the site, and often referred to it, and so that can be a challenge, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Cindy?
Thank you, Ellie.
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just a quick reminder to everyone, this Saturday is the 5K Road Race. The public parking lot where the chamber is will be closed off, the police are coning it off between the 1:00 and 3:00 a.m. shift Friday into Saturday a.m., so the parking lot does need to be empty, so if we do have any cars, they do need to be gone by 7:00 a.m. because the race starts and finishes there. Race begins at 9:30, and then the after-party and awards is at the Mad Minnow from 11:30 to 2:00. That's all.
Thank you, Cindy. Elizabeth?
Hello, for the record, Elizabeth Harder. Two things. One, I think it was only last week, I went to the awarding of the Mercy Otis Warren Award, which is the Woman of the Year Award, and it's a highly esteemed award, and it was given to a Harwich resident, Angelina Chalaka. It was a wonderful ceremony, she is amazing, and so it was a really lovely celebration of a Harwich person. And then secondly, more good news, regarding the IT contracts, my colleagues were incredibly helpful. The chairman of the telecommunications committee that I'm on quickly held a meeting with the director of IT to find out what, exactly what was going on. Two days later, the finance committee also had a meeting with IT, and we were able to ascertain exactly what the IT director needed to fulfill the Harwich and Bourne contracts. There's still debate over whether the department needs a full-time or part-time administrative assistant, so we didn't address that part. But last Wednesday, at our full meeting, the assembly voted to pass the ordinance that the Bourne delegate and I wrote, which gives Billy exactly what he's, I'm sorry, the IT director, Mr. Billy Travers, exactly what he needed. So the contract should be ready to be signed.
Excellent news. Thank you. Excellent news.
Good evening, Stephen Tupper, Deputy Director of the Cape Cod Commission. I wanted to come to personally extend an invitation to our One Cape Summit. So this year, the Cape Cod Commission will be hosting its eighth annual One Cape Summit, August 1st and 2nd, and I'll give you a little handout here, so you don't have to get it all down here, 1st and 2nd, just down the street at the Wacoasette Resort again, very happy to be over that destination again. Looking forward to do it in person this year, so we're going to have a fully in-person event this year. And over the course of the summit, attendees will hear from local folks from Cape Cod as well from across the country, talking about housing affordability and accessibility, marine and freshwater quality, climate adaptation and mitigation, and how to promote sustained economic vitality along with other key regional topics. As we've done in the past, we will be coordinating with the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association to host their August meeting as part of the One Cape Summit. So that breakfast will, breakfast will occur at 7:30 on August 2nd, and run an hour and a half until the begin, beginning of the summit at 9:00 a.m. So we wanted to invite all select board members, town administrators, and assistant town administrators to join us for the breakfast, and of course, the whole summit if you're available as well. So a follow-up for email, with email invitations for those who aren't here today, I'll also have some handouts for those who are. We certainly hope to see folks there, and if you have any questions, certainly happy to answer those as well.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, Larry?
I have questions, that's always an important summit, but Steve, nice meeting you. I'm going to go another direction. Steve is Director of Transportation.
Correct, we're, we're on the transportation staff.
Right. And I reached out to him two weeks ago to attend our next HARC meeting, to help our, because we have a new committee to help educate them on what's possible. Link had met that time, he'll join us again, but give us a perspective from the county aspect and also experience in grants that may be available, and just help bring our committee up to speed, so. Greatly appreciated your willingness to help on that committee, they're very enthusiastic and they're looking for any education, help they can get.
Happy to do it.
Mary?
No, all set, thank you very much.
Julie?
No, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Joe?
Already registered.
Thank you.
Show off.
Well, when Steve emails, I listen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should explain, Michael, by may I say HARC, that's our Accessibility Rights Committee, just be called ADA before we lose people.
Thank you, Larry. Julie, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I apologize.
Oh, sorry, you had one. Go ahead, Joe.
The following is a joint message between the Town of Harwich Administration and the Harwich Elementary School staff. So some great news to announce that the Harwich community playground behind Harwich Elementary School is nearing completion, however, it's not completely done yet. The construction fencing is down, but we had to put up caution tape because it's not ready yet. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that the playground is nearing completion, but still requires review and approval by town hall officials, excuse me, Town of Harwich officials for procurement, and also for building and other things, as well as the certified playground inspector on behalf of the Commonwealth. So while we're, while we're getting close to the end, we just want to remind everybody that it's not fully operational yet, so as tempting as it may be, please stay away for the future, and we hope to come back to the board for an official ribbon cutting ceremony sooner rather than later. So it's really coming together, but not ready yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. I did take a chance to go look at it, and it looks phenomenal. Money well spent.
I, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Julie.
I move that we vote to approve the following Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, October's 26, 2020, and February 7, 2022.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Joe, I'll let you introduce the new business A before we go to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm thrilled to be able to present this evening an appointment that I have made, subject to your affirmation, in accordance with our charter. There is at least one more coming your way next week, if not a few more, but this is for the Director of Cultural Affairs, and as you can see in my memorandum, I have appointed Ms. Cara Moini as our first Director of Cultural Affairs. Ms. Moini has an extensive background in municipally-run cultural affairs venues, with strong skills in budget and operations management, as well as event management. I believe her experience and skills will make an immediate impact in managing existing cultural and related civic programs and events, while aiding me in the ongoing use and potential expansion of cultural program, both at 204 Sisson Road, as well as throughout the town. The screening process was competitive, with several applicants seeking the appointment. I believe Ms. Moini represents the best choice for this new and vital role in our community, and that's why I ask the board for your affirmation of the appointment in accordance with our charter.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a motion on this?
I move that we approve, we vote to approve the appointment of Cara Moini as the Director of Cultural Affairs.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
Just a comment, thank you for that, Jill, certainly well qualified. I will make my plea again, I've made, I like to be, at least I'm consistent, nothing else. I would very much like, as part of what she does, is to look at market research, I'm still concerned that we're doing all this work, we have an idea of what the, what the public wants from a cultural center, and that's a little beyond what you stated, Jill, but I think that's critical. And my other plea is, is that, I imagine she would be, but be creative in looking at any regional opportunities we might take advantage of. It may be that we don't have to compete directly with another cultural center, we can add to there and do something in combination that would benefit us all, so those, those are my two pleas. One is that we do market research to find out from the public, and we don't, we also are creative on any opportunity for regional use of the building.
Thank you, Larry. Joe, you got that?
I do, and after the vote, I'd like to make some remarks if I could.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Selectmen Valentine's points, and just to inform, Ms. Moini should be coming on board early in the fiscal year, and one of the first things we'll work on first is that, beginning the market research by having a series of charrettes throughout the community, that I'll have Ms. Moini lead to get that information, as well as other data sources for market research, and always looking for regional opportunities as well. Additionally, the Capitol Outlet Committee had a meeting this past Friday, where they did a, an onsite inspection of the building, and had their first of many meetings, they may be meeting throughout the summertime, talking about the 204 Sisson Road, AKA Cultural Center, so we're really picking up the pace on that, and I'm very excited to have Ms. Moini join the team to bring that even further.
Thank you, Joe. Any further questions?
No.
All set. Next up is vote to approve next, new weekday entertainment license for Belmont Condominiums Trust, DBA The Beach, 1 Belmont Road, requesting Friday and Saturday, 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music with amplification and dancing. Previously approved in 2022 was Friday and Saturday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside, live or recorded music with amplification. So this is to expand off of what we've already approved. If you remember correctly, we approved a license, and then the applicant was back and requesting that we do another half an hour. And I did suggest that because this is a completely enclosed venue, that with absolutely no complaints from anyone in the public whatsoever, and a clean bill of health from our police chief, that they reapply for indoor, and that's what they've done. So before we go to, actually, if somebody's willing to make a motion, then we can discuss it after the motion.
Sure. I, I move that we vote to approve a new weekday entertainment license, Belmont Condominium Trust, DBA The Beach, 1 Belmont Road, requesting Sat, Friday and Saturday, 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live and recorded music, amplification and dancing.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, and any discussion, Larry?
I read, asked what you stated, Michael, that this is reaction to our last meeting, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
Mary?
Right, it, it was clear from the pictures and the description, it's inside, so I think they were just being overly cautious, so.
Julie?
I'm all set.
Yeah, I have no question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to liaison list, could I get a motion on the proposed liaison list?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the liaison list as listed in the packet, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. And also included in the packet, the liaison policy, for those that aren't aware of it, I'm sure by now we all are, but.
It was a good review.
It's in there, right. Vote to update the Board of Selectmen policy for approval of municipal contracts. So what I've been doing with Joe and staff is trying to figure out how to streamline some of these meetings, and what we have our hands in and what we don't. With that, Joe, could you talk about what your understanding of what the policy was, and then further review of what it is now? Give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you can see in the materials placed in your packet, this is the policy that the board had adopted in 2014. It corresponds to a reference in the charter that talks about that the Board of Selectmen can authorize the town administrator to approve and execute certain contracts and certain class of contracts. So you'll see that in 2014, it was 50,000, it went down to 25,000 in 2018, and it was brought back up to 50,000 in 2020. It's my understanding, based on the original discussion of the board at that time, which obviously has changed somewhat, is that that dollar value corresponds with procurements related to Chapter 30B, which is the general services and supplies, it's the most predominant type of procurement, but that that authorization of 50,000 was tied specifically to Chapter 30B. So if we have grants or other types of agreements that may be at that 50,000, it's my belief that the policy as it exists does not presently allow for that, and it may be better to have more specific language.
Thank you.
And so it's brought for the board's consideration.
I know in 2018, I was part of the board that reduced that down to 25,000, and it was at least two Selectmen at the time that was perceived as sloppy, and we weren't getting all the information, and we weren't sure about the contracts, and there was no recommendation. Under this administrator, I don't have that concern, and one concern I do have is when we're here until 10:30 at night, and, and certain things that we are voting on that I don't believe that we really need to vote on. And the authorizing the chair to sign, we trust the town administrator to run the town, and I would ask the board to approve a little more latitude in, in what contracts Joe signs, and maybe even reconsider the amount, but certainly give him the ability to do some of this work that, quite frankly, there's never any questions from the board, or I can't remember any questions from the board on any of these under $50,000, or I would say as high as $200,000. So Larry, any thoughts?
No, I'm with you on that, I think we need to loosen it up, and I would, I'd be in favor of what 50, raising his mouth two somewhat, so we streamline it.
Mary?
Let me just make a comment.
Go ahead.
Because it, just to be clear, the approval, we still get all the information, so the public, we, so it's nothing, it's still very transparent, so we're just, we still have our jobs to do. This doesn't impede that at all, just streamlines it.
And we could still include them in the packet, it's just what we're, what we're putting on the agenda. One, one other one that we came up with, which will be announced, is our approval of the Caleb Chase funds. It's not required, which is probably why we don't have any on the agenda this week, but when we get our annual report from Paul Doan, he'll explain what the process is, but certainly we don't need to be in the middle of that. Mary, comments?
That's great, because I can't imagine we would ever question a Caleb Chase award after the Council on Aging has vetted them. I agree, I don't see why. Are you proposing all contracts, 50K or less, that the administrator would approve?
All contracts and grants, applications.
And, and maybe upping that, what would you suggest upping, 75?
Joe, do you have a thought on this, or do you want to spend time on it?
Well, so I, I have many thoughts on the topic.
Well, why don't, let me get to Julie's comment, and then you can see if you have a consensus, and then you may be more bruff.
Absolutely.
All right, Julie?
No, I'm not opposed to that, I was in favor of the 50,000 at the time, so, I mean, within reason.
Exactly.
So 75, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
And all contracts and grant, applications and grants.
But as you say, because we'll have them in our packet anyway to, to look at.
Right. Joe?
First of all, thank you for the discussion, and, and starting with each of you, Selectmen Valentine, I think nailed the essence of it at the beginning, where anything that is done, that's done right, is done transparently. And so that's why, working with this board and predecessor boards, we've overhauled the procurement process, to make sure that you, but by extension, the general public, is aware of what's going on and how we're spending our money. And none of this discussion would do anything to change that, on the contrary, I think it just enhances that. My concerns have been, and I appreciate what you, you folks have talked about, first of all, the Caleb Chase, something completely different, but same concept, where you've got a fiduciary arm taking care of that. You folks require the town administrator, so I'm not talking in the third person in this instance, I'm talking about the charter and the job description, so you require your town administrator to become, or to be, a Massachusetts certified public procurement officer, MCPPO, and I have that distinction and designation and certification, as do other staff members, but that requires me to act in a certain manner under the Commonwealth, whether the board wanted me to or not, so there are safeguards, if I could say that, in place where I would be violating an oath, and I would be violating the laws of the Commonwealth of, of, under procurement. Having said all that, $50,000 dovetails perfectly when you're talking about Chapter 30B. And again, Chapter 30B is supplies and services, so what it means that it's not, is the contract deal coming up shortly, which is a roof, which is a vertical construction project. So that's a different statute, different procurement. There may be certain procurements that say are 55, 50, 75, maybe 100,000, where it would be expeditious for the board to grant signing authority to me, but you'd have to state the specific statute, it's not 30B. Second thing would be, as you said, grants. As you know, there have been many times where you have taken the time to vote to authorize the chair with contracts of a certain amount, usually less than 50,000 of grants, certainly less than 50,000 or less, where the Commonwealth already assumes that it's going to be the town administrator by virtue of the position. So that didn't exist now, so that goes a long way. But I also want to be clear, the things that it shouldn't and wouldn't, nor would I sign, whether you wanted me to or not, and that is intermunicipal agreements. The law is very clear, you are the executive branch, and only you can execute intermunicipal agreements, it's this executive body with another municipality or type of entity. That should never be devolved to anybody but the executive branch. But you do, we do have the practice of license agreements, so anyone that's at 204 Sisson Road, that's a license agreement, it doesn't come anywhere near the $50,000 threshold, and it's use of town property, that's not included yet, that's an expansion that you could do that would just expedite everything. So I hope that information helps, but I do appreciate what each and every one of you said, because you're building off of the overall purpose of this, and that is transparency and openness, openness for the, for the general public.
And Joe, given that we're talking about changing a policy, will you make a stab at some language to that?
Certainly will.
And then we'll bring that back in the near future and sign, or vote that?
Will do, thank you.
Including contracts and licensing agreements, the whole nine.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on all outstanding projects, so I put this on the agenda, I really want feedback from board members, I did get some, I'd like to get more, but kind of where you, where you feel like we've left things open, what needs to be done, and that I've also tasked administration to give us a list of open procurement, both current procurement and past procurement, and I'd like to put that on as an agenda item within the next couple of weeks, so that we can, as we roll into goals and objectives, I'd like to, I'd like to understand where we are before we create more. Joe?
Sorry, just on that, about current and past, just given the time of year that we're at, where we're closing up the fiscal. we're closing out the fiscal year, we're also about to embark on future procurements. So that's anything that came out of the annual town meeting in May, that the funding will be available next week and move forward. We've already done some of those, but I'd like to be able for us to show past due or outstanding from prior years, current or working on and some of the future ones that we're aware of. So you have the full gamut on the procurement.
So Joe, if we could, I'd like to do this the first week in July, at least part of it.
So your first meeting in July would be the 11? Okay.
Town administrator, oh, contracts. Motion on the contract?
I move that we vote to execute a contract between Gibson Roos Incorporated and Town of Harwich for the replacement of the pre-engineered building garage roof at the Department of Public Works in the amount of $276,100.
And I apologize, that's a Scrivener's error. It is the word you would expect it to be, roofs.
Oh, okay.
We missed it by one letter in the alphabet. Sorry about that.
Okay, so correction, Gibson Roofs Incorporated for $276,100.
Any second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe. Town administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have nothing significant to offer right now, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. Selectmen's report. Julie?
I don't have anything.
Mary?
Just that I had breakfast this morning at Cranberry Valley and it's just quite nice, a really nice menu, beautiful spot. I think they're doing a great job. The owner happened to be there, so I chatted with him a bit, but if you're looking for a good breakfast, I recommend them.
Thank you.
And great location.
Beautiful.
Larry?
I did attend the concert this Saturday. That was in memory of Stephen Ford and they played a couple of his favorite tunes and it was such an extremely talented family and led by Clancy. And so it was awful. It was packed house. And I told you my lesson last time I attended the concert there. Don't, don't sit in the front row when there's a bagpipe playing. There was no bagpipe or, there was a bagpipe, it was one of the little ones. So it was very, it was very nice.
I attended that as well. It was beautiful and I was way in the back because I.
You spent too much time with the Guinness and wine.
No, it was amazing and, and the kids, all the Marchios, the Fords were all so talented. It's unbelievable.
It's crazy talent.
Yes, it is crazy.
I don't have anything except for a shout out to the Garden Club. I don't know if anyone's noticed the black boxes around town, but boy, they do a lot of work and they look awesome. Motion to adjourn?
So, second.
No, wait, we've got to begin.
You, you need to go, vote to go into executive.
Oh.
And what's your title now?
I don't have a title.
I just.
I'm just an interviewer.
Member Kavanaugh has a motion, just that you'll be coming out solely for the purpose of adjournment, but she's got something to say.
I move that we go into an executive session for, under Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Beach, beach light, Town of Harwich.
And then, Mr. Chairman, as you said at the beginning of the meeting, you would just want to state again for the record that this is a topic that was not reasonably anticipated.
Can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, moved in seconded to go into executive session as read. This was a topic that was not reasonably anticipated. As we got the phone call from the attorney this afternoon, we will not be returning to open session. So we're going into executive session at 7:03 and we will not be going into, back into open session.
Roll call vote.
And roll call vote. Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.